Hi.
I gotta do one of these wins, yeah, I gotta do my firefighter one to train the trainer update. It's gonna be a video conference.
Very crowded.
Yeah, we've got a full house today. Um, for your list, everyone is here except for Travis.
Oh, I got all the way in.
Yeah.
I'll mute my phone, turn the TV on in my office, so I can sit there and watch TV. It was.
It's not very clear though.
Oh, it's a, it's a.
I don't know.
Video, I'm saying with Jeff Seibold.
Very, very boring.
No, no, no minutes without.
I'm gonna be.
No, I'm gonna finish.
Okay.
Got it.
Streaming's working tonight?
Yes.
All right, everyone, it's seven thirty. Uh, we'd like to go ahead and welcome you to the joint meeting of the Mid-County Board of Supervisors and the Mid-County Club Planning Commission, which does include a joint public hearing tonight. Uh, we do have a quorum among the Board of Supervisors with four of the five members here. And, and we'll be here in a second. Mr. Vice Chairman, are you, are you facilitating your side today?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right. You know, it looks like you have a quorum of your planning commission members as well, correct?
Uh, yes, but the chairman's here.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm so used to, um, the way we're sitting is different. It throws me off every time. I'm sorry. Yes, I apologize. All right. Um, and so we can, um, with that, we'll turn the meeting over to the Planning Commission and Holly to walk us through. Thank you.
So tonight we have two text amendments.
I'm sorry.
The first one is an amendment to the Neely County zoning ordinance to include a 100-foot front building setback for all lots in the U.S. Route 360 overlay district. We recalled it last month. We all recommended approval of an amendment to the M1 and M2 industrial zoning district to reduce the front building setbacks, and this was ultimately approved by the Board of Supervisors last week. Shortly after the planning commission meeting, uh, there was some additional discussion between some planning commissioners and Board of Supervisors members, and out of that discussion came a suggestion to include a 100-foot setback for all properties located on the U., on the 360 overlay district. So this will not change anything about what you all voted on last month. Um, the setbacks are still reduced for all other lots, but for any lot that lies on 360, they'll have to have a minimum of a 100-foot setback. Um, Mr. Easter has already made one suggestion that is very valid, um, that it doesn't read minimum setback, and that should be in there because some could have interpreted it as being it has to be 100 feet, no more, no less. So we're gonna include the word minimum in there if you all put that in connection. If you have any questions, I'm happy to turn and answer them.
So really, from the state highway, it'd be more than 100 feet. Can we figure the right of way for 360? What's that, 50 feet?
That's a, it's a hundred and forty-eight feet. It's the width of the, of the right of way. So it's gonna be from the middle of the median strip, half of 148 plus.
Seventy, so it's a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty feet. Be right good ways.
Yeah, and the justification for that was that there is an increasing amount of traffic on 360. So it would make sense for that area to have a 100-foot setback.
Do we have anything in the ordinances? Maybe we have. Where if you start building on 360, they come off a different road, stuck straight into 360?
So.
Like Pirate Town has a lot of those.
Exit.
Yes, and we, yes.
I think we changed that a couple of years ago.
They'll have to double check, but I know a lot of those are set by VDOT. We don't have a lot of control over that exit because VDOT, with VDOT, you can only have X amount of entrances off of 360. I think it might be only one every 200 feet now is the regulation, so they would have to meet that requirement as well.
And I think they're also requiring that to have dedicated turning lanes now into almost all of them, which help, both helps the situation and increases the distance they can be between because you can't overlap them.
Yes, yep.
And I believe your comments, the plan suggests that that is preferable.
It does.
I don't think your comment is.
Right to the.
It just the way to do it because that's what. Otherwise, it needs to go through a crap.
And this isn't the case right now, but in the event any of the underlying zoning districts have a stricter front setback than the U.S. 360, the stricter setback applies. Right now, the max we have is 100, but if that ever changes, where a lot on 360 requires 150-foot setback, it will have to go with that, not the 100. It has to go with the stricter requirement.
I will go ahead and move to the public hearing portion. The planning commission will then have additional time after the joint meeting for additional discussion and to make your recommendation. All right, did we receive any written, um, feedback for this meet, for this proposed change? All right, and we do not appear to have any other member, other people in person as we will officially open the, sorry, we'll officially open the public comment then.
You want him to open it or me?
Chairman of the Planning Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought we did it differently.
Right. Well, we'll open the public hearing for the First Amendment. Any discussion?
Uh. Rachel's here for the next amendment.
Okay. The only name I didn't recognize.
Any discussion? Now, I'll close the public hearing on the First Amendment for the 100-foot building setback. Turn it back over to Mr. Easter. Or.
Holly, we can move to the next, next item then.
All right, the Second Amendment after discussion tonight is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow solar energy systems utility scale as a permitted use by special exception permit in the RR3 rural residential zoning district. Over the past two to three months, I would say I've had maybe 10 different centers, companies, property owners reach out wanting to have utility scale solar. Right now, in the RR3 zoning district, we only permit commercial and residential solar as an accessory use. Utility scale solar is only permitted in A5 and RP5, also by special exception permit. The county has been approached by Dominion Power, this isn't a secret, um, wanting to use our old landfill sites, both of which are zoned RR3. These sites can't be used for anything else because of DEQ requirements. Um, so frankly, it'd be a very good use of the property and generate revenue for the county. Um, but allowing the utility scale solar as a use by special exception would still give you all in the Board of Supervisors some input about if you did not feel like it was a good fit, it can still be voted down. And they would still have to meet all of the alternative, alternative energy ordinance regulations. So no more than 3% of land within a five-mile radius can be dedicated to solar. Um, they would have to have a 50-foot setback on the rear and side and 100 feet off the front, a six-foot fence all the way around, and a 25-foot buffer all the way around. So this would not change any of that. They would still be expected to meet all the same requirements as any other utility scale solar. So that's all I have, but assuming you all probably have questions about this, so.
Any further from commission, any questions before we open the public hearing?
Are there any other zoning districts that it's not allowed? Uh, I mean, out of anything, I don't know why solar wouldn't be allowed everywhere.
It is not permitted in any of our business, industrial, or strictly residential zoning districts. So right now, it's reserved for just the agricultural, leisure, and rural preservation areas of the county, which is a large chunk of the county. And then this would, the inclusion of RR3 would make it, I'd say probably 90% of the county.
Or more.
No more questions. I'll open the public hearing on the Second Amendment for the, uh, solar energy system utility scale. And I think Rachel has something that she can speak, or she has something to make audience.
I'm not sure if Rachel's claiming to speak or just listen. Um, she is one of the ones who has approached us about doing a utility scale solar project in a rural residential area.
Hi, everybody. I am here mostly just to listen and to stay up to date on the proposed amendment. Um, but I figured I would pop in and just say hello and introduce myself.
You having questions?
I do not. No, I'm just hoping to stay up to date with what the decision is, just because we're interested in the development of a project.
I have a question. Um, this field said something about, uh, the engine interested in, you know, one of the landfills of the site, and she didn't say which one.
Both.
The old one.
Both.
Yeah, the old one.
Yeah, both.
There is technically someone else interested on behalf of a program the Dominion offers.
Yes.
It's not Dominion directly. It's the, it's what we approved for, um, at last month.
And it's not set in stone. They're looking at 80 sites, and there's an entire application period where they'll narrow it down and just choose sites that meet all of their specs. So we don't know for sure yet if those two sites will be used, but as of right now, if our site gets picked.
But they're looking at both of those.
Yes, they're looking at, both sites have been included.
And that was one of the primary reasons we agreed to that, uh, with that company last month because other companies had expressed an interest only in one, and it'd be preferable to get a company that would take both, which would be better for the county, reduce their maintenance cost, and increase the lease fees.
It's probably not a bad use for it because what you kept those things and say, oh, you're really not supposed to take them back up again, so.
Correct.
You gotta center for a long, long time.
Yeah, very limited uses.
Yes.
In fact, we questioned whether they, these would meet DEQ requirements, but the, the, it's not an actual lease. It's a right, it's basically like a first right of refusal that we signed last month. It was public, in the public meeting. Puts all the obligation on the energy companies to procure agreements from DEQ and anyone else. There's no obligation on a Mid-County at all.
Any more discussion? Here you now, now close the public hearing on the Second Amendment, the energy system utility scale solar energy. Turning back over to Mr. Easter.
Thank you. And with the public hearings concluded for those two items, that is the conclusion of the joint public hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn the joint, uh, meeting for the evening? Thank you. All those in favor of, uh, adjourned, please find the sign of eye.
Eye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Joint is over, and we'll turn it over to you, Mr..
Thank you. Certainly have a forum. With your pleasure on minutes, that's two, two minutes. First one is from the public hearing with the joint, and then the second, just a regular planning commission meeting.
A leak of motion to approve most.
Motion is made to approve both of the second. More discussion? Here you now, all in favor of the motion, make it known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I guess the first thing we'll do is discuss the First Amendment of the 100-foot setback. Any discussion from the commission members? Questions? It's up to you. What would you prefer? I figure we'd get these way there, and then we'd go to the bylaw. Any discussion? Go here, a motion for, against, to send it to the Board of Supervisors.
This one includes the minimum.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the word minimum added.
Included.
Mined it.
Yep.
Motion's been made in a second.
All second.
All in favor? Any more discussion? Any none, all in favor of the motion to pass it on to the Board of Supervisors, make it known by saying aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, on the Second Amendment, for the, uh, solar. What size acres are they looking for? What size acres are the counties, uh, landfills, those two?
Those two.
The one on Epsom Lane I know is right at 20 acres. I'm not sure about the one.
It's probably not missing 20 acres by a whole lot. It's probably.
Fifty percent would be less than five megawatts.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're not large, but they're large enough to be considered utility scale because an accessory use is just enough to run your house.
Are they close to main lines where they're gonna attach to?
When they came out, Patty, Avery, and I did a site visit with them, and they checked all of that. They were looking at, they said if there's enough electricity to run the convenience center there, then they'll have plenty of electricity to do what they need to do with the solar.
That's right down, the one down here in town is right down the street from where Scott had that generator power plant. And they already got the infrastructure there with the big power lines and stuff.
360, imperfectly right there.
Any more comments, questions?
Is there a definition of what utility scale is?
Yes. There's not a lot to it. It basically just goes on the amount of megawatts it produces.
I was just thinking, 20 acres, start at 50 foot around, 100 foot, that cuts right many acres out of 20 acre tract.
Yeah, with, well, 15 acres, you put a lot of solar panels there.
Yeah.
Utility scale is a solar energy conversion system which has a rated capacity of one megawatt or greater. They're used to provide electricity to a utility provider.
Takes about 10 acres for a megawatt, roughly.
Dominion's criteria encourages reuse of facilities like this, which is part of what's making it more attractive for some of the other companies, um, rather than taking new land kind of out of service. So that's some, there's some points that it increases in their application, I think is.
Playing it unusable for other things, which is good.
Yeah, exactly.
Because that was a lot of questions about the last two solar plants.
Correct.
So basically, the only thing we're doing just is we're including RR3 in with the A5 and RP5 and same regulations for all of it. Okay?
It still requires a special exception.
Right. Any more discussion? Now here, a motion for, against, pass it to the Board of Supervisors.
I'll make a motion to pass it on.
Motion's been made in a second. Made in a second. Any more discussion?
I just like to say that, uh, I believe, uh, out in the southwest of the canyon, through the land, this recreational area, uh, there's a extremely large, um, utility scale solar, called, uh, over. Uh, this is, you know, this, this is a contingency. We have the same amount of sanctions everywhere, so why not save it? It's not useful somewhere else, so I'm going to find a group.
Okay, motion made second. All, any more discussion? Here you now, all in favor of the motion, make it known by saying aye?
Nah.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we'll go on to, I guess, the new business, uh, by law.
Yes, and you all will see that I put the legal review of the bylaws in front of you. I know it's a little intimidating. There's a lot of red on that document.
All we made was add this year, or taken out.
Or he had a question about, so I'll briefly go through it. So on the first page, and Jeff, all of Jeff's comments are in there, so you can see why I added. Um, the first part he added, that's straight from the state code, and that's just the duties of the planning commission. You don't have to add them in there, but it's there for informational, if there's ever a question of exactly what your role is. The next one, he commented because right now it reads there can only, there should be between five and 16 members. He wanted the 1967 resolution that created the planning commission. I looked for that today and was unable to find that, but I will keep looking. It's been a little while since that was put into place. Um, some change in wording in section 2.2 regarding the Board of Supervisors' removal of a planning commissioner. The secretary for Article III officers, the secretary, he said, is normally the staff member, so that would be me, but it's not something you all traditionally wrote on, but he said you can put, put it in there if you would like. Nothing for Articles Five and Six.
So everything that's highlighted and read is actually the lawyers' comments, right?
Yes, he either had a comment about it, and then what struck through or underlined in red is what he wanted to either add or take out.
Okay, and what about the stuff that's just been read?
So that section, Article 6.1, that's just in red but not highlighted, is a section that was not previously in there at all. This is about having electronic meetings. You all know the world we live in now, so that is inevitable to holding planning commission meetings. This is essentially just to give you all permission to attend virtually, for us to have public comments virtually.
That's from Jeff too.
Yes, and that is straight out of the state code.
And it's the same language we put into the Board of Supervisors' rules. Right now, you're oper, right now, you're operating under, uh, emergency authorization from the states, but once the emergency passes, you wouldn't be able to do anything of electronic if you needed to. So this just gives you the ongoing permission, but not requirement. And you'll see it, it authorizes the chairman to approve and disprove, okay, that too.
Okay, so he added all that information in there, nothing to Article Seven or Eight. Article Nine, he just added the word public in a couple of times instead of just hearings. It's public hearings.
A lot of things.
Adding a little more information with an application project overview by staff. Yeah, he added staff in there instead of the word administrator seven, several times. And then lines for it to be amended. So it looks like a lot, but it's mainly just adding in your duties and the ability to have electronic meetings.
So the things that are underlined, and this would be underlined, it was black or white.
Yeah, nothing in here would actually be red.
Okay.
This is just to point out what you should draw your attention.
I knew if it'd be underlined was a different designation.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
So I know that's a lot. You all can take it home, and then if you want to make the motion next month, um, or if you have any questions between now and then, you can call me. But if you have any questions right now, I'm happy to answer them.
Is there any questions?
No, but I'd like to, to, you, to have this folks read it over all and come through to next month.
All right.
That's my personal opinion.
We're gonna make a motion to table it till next month, we'll vote?
Sure, I'll do that.
They're second to table it the next month?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Here you now, we'll table it to the next month, we'll vote, take it home and digest it. If you have any questions, call Holly, and she can answer them. I guess she'll get up yet.
That's right.
I guess the Board of Supervisors have heard similar type updates to it.
Correct.
Which is not bad. It's been a while since we had any updates on this, sure.
Yeah, yeah, this is mainly.
Re-reviewed.
You put up to date.
Any other information or comments? For discussion?
No, one thing I will say, because I know this, um, she is going to be reaching out to you all individually and the Board of Supervisors members. There is a potential proposal for a very large solar project, um, in the 1,500-acre range, very large. It's the project Rachel's representing. With that, there are going to be several things. We might have to pull the zoning committee together, the zoning subcommittee, because there are some things you all are gonna have to make decisions on regarding the setbacks for this project. Um, it's several different landowners and several, I think, maybe 10 different parcels about whether or not you want them each parcel to meet the setbacks, or the site as a whole to meet the setbacks.
The parcels touch each other.
The parcels touch each other, different landowners, um, but yes, the parcels touch each other. Well, one chunk of parcels touch each other, the other chunk of parcels touch each other. So might have to convene the subcommittee, but you all might want to think on that, and I'm happy to field questions after this, if you have any, to go into more depth on that.
Maybe I'll ask how the other two solar projects come along. Then kind of hush up and herd much.
Yes, they have not started doing anything. They have gotten their site plans and erosion and sediment control plans approved. They called me recently to ask how, to ask how long their special exception permit is valid for, which tells me they're not looking to get started ASAP. I told them two years, and it seemed like they were gonna want to come back and ask for an extension. So I don't foresee those getting going anytime soon.
They wait over two years to build it must be not, not be that crucial.
All the money's not there. It's in, it's in the money, maybe.
The one, the either one.
Well, it's, it's a fake energy anywhere, so it doesn't really matter if you put it up or not.
I just hope we don't get like Texas out.
They just want to collect the government money from it.
I'm thinking that might be a lot.
Any more discussion, any comments? I will ask that county have to send a letter to Liberty about suggestion that Renee brought out last month. Possibly get, see if, uh, they give up some redstone.
You gonna defer that question?
Do you have any comment?
No.
Suggestion? I didn't know if it, they didn't have it for, but you know. I just, just wondering if a suggestion, I thought.
Uh, it was a no to no comment, sorry.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying.
Well, we leave it at that.
Liberty's in business to make money. I doubt they would give anything up.
Never heard it asked.
That's right.
Renee said. Anything else? There ain't nothing. I guess next month we'll have a couple more updates at least, now, maybe more.
Yes, we'll put the bylaws on there for a vote, and we'll have at least two more. Again, if y'all have any suggestions, I've got suggestions through June, but I'm sure.
Suggestions, which ones to do?
Yeah, if y'all have specific ones, you think need to be looked at.
Otherwise, are you just taking them in order, or how are you doing it?
Right now, I'm taking them as issues arise, and then there will probably be more method to my methods.
All right, so, excuse me.
Go ahead.
The two that we just did tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Were they reviewed for other changes too, or just, just the issues?
Well, the 360 overlay, yes, because that whole section is a page and a half. So that one's fine. The RR3 may be some attention.
So that one will come back.
Yes. But the RR3 was one that needed to be immediately addressed, but I wanted to go ahead and get that. But the RR3 was one that needed to be immediately addressed, but I wanted to go ahead and get that one.
All right, thanks for all your help and progress in that way. Hearing no further comments or discussions, I'll say the meeting's adjourned and we'll see you next month. Go to read, file. Come back to any questions or call Holly.
Seriously, we have a lot of ordinances and zoning things that are never enforced. It makes me wonder why y'all put all the work.